Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Wednesday Town Hall gathering. If anyone's here for the first time, glad to have you. Reminder that you can put the upper in the upper right-hand corner of your screen if you want to select speaker view, then your screen will fill with the speaker or whoever is speaking at the moment, or you can have gallery view where you see all our wonderful smiling faces, unmasked and free. I want to welcome Father Tom Bonacci with us. It's good to have you, Tom. Haven't, you haven't been at St. Peace for a while. And hopefully after COVID time, you'll be back to do some adult ed and scripture reflection with us. But I was very happy that Tom had an evening free. He said that like many of us, he's living on Zoom these days, which is good. We do have to give thanks to God for the communication that's technology allows us in this format. Tom is well regarded as a scripture scholar and retreat leader here at the parish. He's been with us for staff days, giving us insight and formation as well as parish adult ed programs, particularly with scripture, but with scripture, taking that ancient book and helping us to hear it speak to us today. So Tom, the floor is yours for, I'm gonna start though with a, I thought for the opening prayer, I'd use the text of a beautiful hymn by Christian author and poet Christina Rossetti from 1872. You've heard the recording of it many times. "In the bleak midwinter frosty wind made moan, earth stood hard as iron, water like a stone. Snow had fallen, snow on snow, snow on snow, in the bleak midwinter long ago. Our God, heaven cannot hold him, nor earth sustain. Heaven and earth shall flee away when he comes to reign. In the bleak midwinter, a stable place aviced, to Lord God Almighty, Jesus Christ. Enough for him whom cherubim worship night and day, breastful of milk and mangeful of hay. Enough for him whom angels fall before, the oxen ass and camel which adore. Angels and archangels may have gathered there, cherubim and seraphim thronged the air. But his mother only, in her maiden bliss, worshiped the beloved with a kiss. What can I give him, poor as I am? If I were a shepherd, I would bring him a lamb. If I were a wise man, I would do my part. Yet what can I give him? Give my heart. Tonight, we give you our heart, O Lord, and the heart of our world. Amen." Now, Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. It's my blessing and privilege to be with you tonight. I'd like to take you to a particular scripture. Actually, it's one verse. It's Luke chapter two, verse eight. "In the fields there were shepherds caring or watching over the flocks by night." Here's what's interesting about this particular scene of the shepherds. One, in contemporary world, the shepherds have been depicted on Christmas cards as idyllic. Wonderful shepherds out in the field with their staff. Maybe the stars are shining and the music is playing in the background. All is calm, all is bright. And so we imagine they were in some kind of paradise. At least for a moment, there's an oasis out in the field as angels sing glory. Shepherds are fascinated by what they see and what they hear. They hurry over to the manger where they adore. They adore a child who's born in poverty. As if they suspect that if you scratch the surface of the poverty, you will find the richness and the depth of the divinity. And there is no doubt that in the liturgy and in the tradition of the church, there is something that's romanticized about that scene. It touches us deeply. Even in the secular world, the idea of dressing children up as shepherds and having them be part of the Christmas decor has become kind of standard. So we need to revisit this text because it has captured the imagination more than any other texts of Christmas of the church, the society, and all of us as individual people. We also know from the New Testament that there are many references to shepherds. The famous one being the 10th chapter of the Gospel of John, where Jesus refers to himself as the good shepherd. Interestingly enough, this is the shepherd that laid down his life for the sheep. Any of you know that if you were a shepherd in ancient times, far from being romantic in your relationship with the sheep, you were in a business. You raised the dying things so you could sell them on the market. They were good for wool. They were good for food. You took them to the butcher. You didn't have an interpersonal relationship with them. That's why in the 10th chapter of John, when Jesus says, "I am the good shepherd. I give my life for the sheep." That's reversing it. Shepherds don't give their life for the sheep. As a business, sheep give their life for the shepherds. So the idea of the shepherd has become endearing because Jesus turned the image on his head. Of course, when we come to the Christmas theme, we can't help but understand that we're looking at Christmas from the viewpoint of Easter, where the child who would be shepherd is born as lamb and is sacrificed on a cross for the sake of all of us. One of the primary images of the church and her authority, by which the church must always remember that authority is not power over people, but the willingness to walk with people. As Pope Francis famously said, "The church needs to walk with people, not on them." The shepherd's staff signifies the Episcopal presence, but it's the shepherd's staff in the bishop's hand that reminds us of the presence of Christ in the church, who was saying to us over and over again, "The greatest among you is the one who serves the least." And finally, this scene of the shepherd out in the field by night caring for the flock occurs on Christmas Day, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. The mass at nighttime is the scene of the shepherd. The mass during the day is the scene of the shepherd. And oddly enough, on the eighth day of Christmas, which is now called the solemnity of Mary, January the first, the gospel repeats the Christmas gospel. "Out in the field there were shepherds, taking care of the flock by night." So now you have some idea why I began to think, after maybe 50 years of meditation, there must be something about this scene. There must be something about this verse. There must be something about this imagery of the shepherds out in the field, taking care of the flocks by night, that the church wants us to hear. While it's only one verse within the Bible, the imagery of the shepherd opens up the entire scripture from Isaiah to Ezekiel to Jesus himself, to the Psalms, to David, to the Book of Revelation, to the way we might behave in the church. It's a very, very powerful image. Now, let's look at the significance of the text. Now, remember, Christmas is one of my favorite times of the year. I find it consoling. I find it grace-filled. I love the lights. I love the music. If it was up to me, we could decorate for Christmas through the whole year. Perhaps it would invite us to the beauty of our souls and hopefully we could have a silent night where all is bright and all is calm. However, if we go back to the actual history, the shepherds are out in the field by night and all is not calm and all is not peaceful. We now know that the fields around Bethlehem were the killing fields of Herod. Herod would never miss an opportunity to put to death for the sake, to put to death the innocent for the sake of his own power. To this day, there are tyrants in charge of nations, so to speak, who would sacrifice the children for their own wealth, their power and their status. Christmas has something to say. I'm afraid that the way we have romanticized Christmas has pulled the rug out from under the beast, that this Christ seeks to be born in the killing fields. This Christ seeks to be born in the streets of injustice. We now know from the historical reconstruction of the shepherds that the shepherds in the field were poor. They were not landowners and oftentimes did not own the flock. They rented a certain segment of the flock. We now know that the income they would have received was not enough money for an average family to survive. They had wages that were poverty level and below poverty level. Now, if we pull back from chapter two, verse eight, to the entirety of chapter two, something comes in the sharp relief. We see the way chapter two begins is that Luke tells us who the emperor is, who the governor is, who the powers-to-be happen to be. They have mighty names. They have names like Corinnaeus, Augustus and Pyrrhus. They are major players within the world. You would think that the angels, being representatives from God, were no less than the divine presence themselves, would go to Rome, London, Paris, Alexandria. No, the shepherds are in Bethlehem. But notice the shepherds have no name. In sharp contrast to the powers of the world who are named, you have nameless shepherds. Where would the angels go to nameless shepherds? It tells us something about the Bible in general, and it tells us something about what it is to be a disciple of Jesus. How many times we are tempted to go to the powerful, the wealthy? Those who have status, the angels go to the impoverished. Those who are below the poverty line, those who are taxed to death in order to sustain the greedy. Those whose lives are in danger in order to sustain the tyrant. Today, for example, we talk about the essential workers. It is fascinating that 69% of the essential workers belong to minority groups, so-called minority groups. They're the people who are easily sacrificed for the sake of power, wealth and greed. Christmas, then, for all of its beauty and the liturgy and all of its magnificence within the culture, is not the introduction to the gospel. It is gospel. Notice that the emphasis is not on the birth of the child. There's more information about the shepherd than the birth. Because the presence of Christ in the world, the presence of God in the world empowers the underdog, empowers the poor, empowers the marginalized. We already had fair warning, Mother Mary in chapter one sang the song that became the evening prayer of the church. "The powerful will be ripped down from their thrones and the lowly exalted." We see her words move from what some people may call threat to pure gospel. Because as the angels appear to the shepherds, the shepherds are the lowly, being lifted up by the divine presence. The birth of Christ then causes a crisis within the world. No longer will the poor sing glory to the emperor. Rather, they will sing glory to the child who is born as one like them. And if you look at the mystery of the liturgy, there's the wonderful exchange. In the quiet splendor of the liturgy, we learn God became one with us, that God may give us our divinity and we may give God our humanity. It's called the wonderful exchange. So the language of the temple, glory, the language of heaven, glory, and Luke's gospel is not announced to the powerful, but to the impoverished, to the marginalized, to the edge people, the shepherds. Some people think that the shepherds were responsible for raising the lambs that were sacrificed in the temple. Bethlehem, used in our language, would be suburban Jerusalem. So that the sheep that grew up in Bethlehem, that were raised in Bethlehem, provided the lambs that would be sacrificed in the temple. Some even think that the Paschal Lamb in particular came from the flock near Bethlehem. If that is true, and there's no reason to suspect that it's not true, then you can see the beauty of the text. Because these shepherds that know something about the Paschal Lamb now go visit the Lamb of God who's in the manger. And I often like to say to people, you know how people come up to you and say, "What did you get for Christmas? What did your mother give you? What did your spouse give you? What did your children give you? What did you give one another? What did you give yourself?" Perhaps the other question we need to ask is, "What did God give you for Christmas?" The answer to that question is Easter. Because we can see deep in the Christmas liturgy and deep in the scriptures of Christmas week, we see the ethos, the mythos and the beauty and the majesty of Easter. Here's a Christ who came to give us his life, not simply by dying on the cross, but by living in the street. Be careful. The gift of your life doesn't simply mean you die. It means you die the self in every moment of your life as you bless others with your presence. One of the things that I do every Christmas, and this year with the exception because of the pandemic, is a small group of friends and myself go to San Francisco and walk the streets. And we meet the people who live in the street. We don't primarily go there because we're going to give them relief, even though we hope we do. We don't go there so we can give them some coffee and a sandwich, but we hope we do. We go there because they are the shepherds roaming the streets. If you want to know what the fields were like at the time of Jesus, then all you have to do is walk the streets today. The underpass by the highway, the entrance way to a bike station, the back door of the 7-Eleven, or that side of the town that nobody feels safe going to. There we would see the fields where the shepherds are dwelling, where life is difficult, and it is to them that angels appear. And oftentimes just walk in those streets in the dark. That I learned something about the story of the child in the manger. The child in the manger, of course, is not simply poverty. The manger is the place where the animals would eat. There's a deep connection between the manger of Luke and the altar of the church. And as recent popes have pointed out, it is very, very difficult to go to the breaking of the bread at the altar and not remember the hungry in the street. There is a straight line. What we discover in our society, and I've heard it this year with the pandemic and COVID-19, it broke my heart. In the early days of the pandemic, there were powerful people, people who have healthcare. They were elected to Congress. They were elected to government. When people started to die, this is what some of them said. They were gonna die anyway. Pope Francis called that the throwaway society. Not only do we throw away trash, we throw away food. We throw away people to the throwaway, to the discarded, to the underdog. The angels come singing glory. Pope Francis says we must meet the poor because the poor have something to say to us. That's why I think every night is Christmas Eve. We need to go out into the fields. What have the shepherds heard tonight? What angels have appeared? Let's deepen this a little bit. Pope Francis reminds us that those of us who would be shepherd must begin to smell like the sheep. I don't think he's invented a new form of cologne. I think he's suggesting an intimacy, a willingness to meet. Were called to watch over the flock by night when it's dangerous. Notice what happened in the birth of the child. The child was born into the world and the story become about the shepherds. So much so that twice on Christmas and on the solemnity of Christmas, January the first, the gospel is about the shepherds. Well, we focused on the birth of the child. The child must be born not only into the manger of Bethlehem caves, but the child must be born into our hearts. For suddenly we become aware that we are shepherds where angels sing glory. Not that we might be entertained, but transformed. Where Jesus was saying, "They who see you, see me. They who hear you, hear me." What I hope we have established so far is that the story of the birth of Jesus in the New Testament in general and in Luke's gospel in particular is not introduction to the gospel. It is the gospel. What we celebrate on Christmas Day is what you and I are called to observe in every moment of our lives. From the convention of the day, the despisable and the despicable were invited to come to the manger by the angels of heaven because no power on earth would give them credibility. And oftentimes, what the powers of earth reject, the majesty of heaven embraces. The shepherds go over to the manger. And Luke says they worshiped. The Christmas song is, "Oh, come, let us adore him." Think about that for a moment. Because there's two times a year you hear, "Oh, come, let us adore him." When shepherds go to the manger and we follow with great joy. And when the cross is unveiled on Good Friday, three times the presider sings, "Oh, come, let us adore him." Behold, the wood of the cross. Oh, come, let us adore. Here's a Jesus that becomes so one with us that he becomes one with us in death, that death itself would be transformed into a moment of self-giving. Isn't it interesting that the child who would be shepherd is a shepherd who's born as a lamb? In all of the gospels, there's this testimony that somehow none of Jesus is the lamb, especially in John's gospel. Here is the lamb that brings out the best in us as to what it is to be a shepherd. So as Jesus slumbers in our commemorative celebration of Christmas, as he's still freshly born in the manger, you and I are rising. We're becoming aware of what it is to be shepherd. I would now like to introduce to you four shepherds with the realization that there are hundreds of thousands of shepherds on the loose within the world. Oh, I know, in the midst of pandemic and all the bad news and the uncertainty, we must be depressed. We must be beside ourselves. But let's tell the whole story. Let's not forget the thousands of people throughout the world who, as soon as pandemic hit, went to work in the service of other people. And amidst of all the conflict that's in our society, opened their minds and hearts and stood courageously. Let us never tell the story as if it's an apocalyptic destruction. Let us always tell the story as if it's gospel because it is. Jesus was born in the killing fields of Judea. Where all was not calm and all was not bright. It was in the midst of greed and oppression and rejection that he was born and empowered those who were lowly. When you and I feel depressed, overwhelmed, uncertain, angels will come and sing glory if we have the courage to listen. Sometimes what gives us hope is the great behavior of the people who live among us. May I meditate with you for a few moments before we have some discussion on four dimensions of what it is to be a shepherd by looking at four people who illustrate what it is to dwell in the fields by night and care for the flock and watch over them. Number one. In Rome, there is a bishop. His name is Cardinal Conrad Pajewski. I'll call him Bishop Conrad. Bishop Conrad works in the Vatican. An associate of Pope Francis. Maybe in the inner circle. Back in March, when the pandemic was severe, especially in Italy, if you remember, Bishop Conrad had a bicycle. And he started riding around the parish of the Rome, delivering milk and bread and eggs. Now, remember, here's a man of privilege. Here's a man who could say, "I need to be isolated in a cathedral. I need to be cared for. Instillate me from the virus. Keep..." Instillate me from the virus, keep those people away. As a matter of fact, he went to a monastery where there were 20 monks. And he said to the monks, how many of there are you? They said 20. He said, come with me. We must go out and serve the people of Rome. Let us endanger ourselves and not our dedicated people. He was willing to die for the flock. Seeing the ways of the world, we could say such foolishness. Save your neck, keep yourself safe. But he holds the bishop's staff. The greatest among you, the one who served the least. The killing fields are the streets of Rome. When the media finally caught up with him in order to praise him, he was very humble. And he said, oh, no, 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 no. We must feed the hungry, clothe the naked, reach out to people at the expense of ourselves. And then he said this. It's no big deal on my part. I love to deliver milk. When I was a little boy, I always wanted to grow up to be a milkman. And now I am. I guess being a cardinal and a bishop was a stepping stone to being a milkman with a bicycle in the killing fields of the virus. Yes, he contracted the virus. I believe he's okay now. He's probably back on his bicycle delivering milk to those in need. Here's what we would call shepherd of the flock by night, caring for them. Perhaps the Christ was born in the manger of his heart. The second person I would like to introduce you to that you already know is Julia Jackson, the mother of Jacob Blake, who was shot seven times in the back by the police in Kenosha, Wisconsin. We know that in the United States in particular, we have a problem dealing with racism. This past year, we may have been depressed when we became more and more aware of our history of genocide, misogyny, sexism, classism, and racism. But that's a turning point. As all of us know, who may practice the sacrament of reconciliation, to become aware of your crimes, to become aware of your sins, to become aware of your shortcomings, to dedicate yourself to your excellence. That's why we must be forthright and honest with our past that we may confess our sins in the present, have firm purpose of amendment and change our lives in the future. I know it is now fashionable to look back on 2020 and say, what a horrible year. Well, if you tell the whole story, it was a turnaround year. For the first time ever, to great degrees, people of color, black and brown people, indigenous people, white people marched together in the streets. Unscrupulous people would see that as an opportunity for rioting and destruction. That's exactly what happened back in August in the shooting of Jacob Blake, the son of Julia Jackson. Within hours, she was on the television. Within hours, she was standing before people. She was pleading with people to open their hearts to stop the violence, to stop the hatred. Not only to stop the violence of rioting, but the violence of the hatred that causes the rioting. Here's a mother on the verge of losing her son. He will be maimed for the rest of his life. She immediately leaves the manger of his sickbed, his injuries, in order to speak to a nation and to a world. Through her tears, she says, Jacob would not want this. The violence you are doing one to another, the hate you have one for another, he would not want this. The one who's wounded would want peace. She reminds me of Mary. The lowly will be exalted. She reminds me of the angels sing glory. She reminds me of the shepherds. She speaks softly, lovingly, respectfully. He would not want this. Then she said something that touched my heart. She said, let us open our hearts. It's very, very important to open our hearts when we're so used to opening our mouth. My day goes by when I don't open my mouth. Now every night I ask myself the question, well, Tom, today you opened your mouth 1,223 times. How's the heart doing? Can I open my heart? This is a woman who didn't talk about peace and respect because all was calm and all was bright. Her son was on the verge of death. Many of you know that. Many of you know tragedy in your life. It's incredible that peace can be born. Wisdom can be born in the most unlikely places. Do you remember at the beginning of the pandemic, it actually started in China? At 7:00 PM every night, people would start to applaud. They would cheer out the window, the healthcare workers and the first responders. I don't know if it's the first time, but when this custom got to Italy, people started singing out the window. They would open their windows at 7 o'clock at night and sing out the window. I've gotten into a custom that every night at 7 o'clock, I light a candle. I even open the doors so the light of the candle can go out the door. The Holy Spirit touched my heart and said, you know, it's not about candlelight, it's about heartlight. It's about your light. Open the door of your heart. I've come to realize in the past year that every minute is 7:00 PM. At what moment should we not give thanks? And so we've heard the story a thousand times over of all of these people throughout the world who are coming to the assistance of other people while all is not right and all is not calm. On November 26th, in the news media, there was a photograph and a little story that just touched me deeply. Dr. Joseph Verlan in Houston, Texas, a doctor on duty in a COVID ward. The photograph was an elderly gentleman, obviously in pain and exasperated from the disease of the virus, was bent over in the doctor's arms. Here's a man of science. Here's a man of intelligence. Here's a man of prestige. And he has his arms around his elderly patient, holding him like a baby. It's a fascinating insight. No matter how great we might become with our knowledge and our skill, the willingness to hug another person and hold them. I'm sure you've heard this. I hear it all the time now. The number one thing people want to do is hug somebody. I can't tell you how many grandparents are crying on the phone saying, I just want to hug my grandchild. I want to hug my child. I want to hug anybody. I never thought I would live long enough to think that a handshake would be the greatest thing in the world. Be able to grab another person's hand with two hands. Hello, how are you? So wonderful to meet. There's the doctor. A shepherd in the field by night, caring for his flock. Not simply with his skill. He didn't allow his prestige, knowledge, and skill to interfere with his ability to hold. Now there is a fourth person. Most of these fourth persons never end up in the news. They do marvelous work. You know them quite well. They're you. To be a shepherd in the tradition of Jesus Christ is not to have the power of office, status of prestige, wealth and notoriety. It is to have that gentle faith when the night is dark. It is to have that hope when despair is reasonable. It is to have that love when everything seems like it's falling apart. So if your heart has broken this year and if the great symbols of Christmas and all the beauty has caused you to shed a tear because of who's been lost and what's been lost and not that it's the way it used to be, it's because you care. You have great love. You are those shepherds in the field by night. And I don't know if an angel has appeared to you, but I do know this, that when you appear, an angel has appeared to me and that angel is you. So thank you, holy community. Thank you for being the angels who proclaim the gospel. This very day in Bethlehem City, your Savior is born. This will prove it to you. You will find the majesty in the throne of a manger poised to give it himself and consume nothing. Sing glory. Thank you, holy community, for being the angels appearing in the night. Even if you bring the gift of your tear, the gift of your fear and the gift of your prayer and the courage of your faith. Thank you for being shepherds. Thank you for making that phone call. Thank you for saying that prayer. Thank you for making that outreach. Thank you, holy community, for being the shepherd called Jesus. Thank you for being his loving and self-giving presence in the world as it is. Thank you for not being quiet, kind people of faith. Well, when things go back to normal, I'll sing glory. When things go back to normal, I'll care. Thank you for caring in the present moment of the here and now. Thank you for being the angels to sing. Thank you for being the shepherds to the door. And thank you for being the Jesus who gives. And be aware of my love, my prayer and my blessing for each and every one of you.
And thank you, Tom. You know that we could keep vigil and listen to you until midnight when the angels appear again, but thank you for being willing to appear to us with good news and with challenging words. And especially for those three examples. You're right. We curse 2020 when we really should be extolling all the angels that have appeared to us personally and in our world. They are the ones that remind us of the good news and of the presence of God's grace, no matter what the circumstances. And perhaps especially as you intimate in the darkness of the night and in the squalor of the field and in the street corner. That opening verse from Christine Rossett, his poem, "If I were a shepherd, I would bring him a lamb." What can I give him? Give him my heart. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. That's one of my favorite songs. I almost wanted to cry when you prayed that. It was really sweet and transformative and challenging.
So if there are any personal reflections or questions that anyone might have, you know, feel free, we've got a couple of minutes. If you want to, you know, raise your hand and or just unmute yourself and
I just want to thank you and say how wonderfully inspiring this was and comforting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. God bless.
Jen.
Father Tom, as usual, you take a, maybe a dark night and bring sunshine to it. And I'm thinking now of all the all the negative things that we've thought and felt throughout the year. And now I'm bringing, I'm thinking of the friends and family and technology and Zoom and things that we've been able to do and work around in order to make this hard time a blessed time. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
You too.
Because I always feel like I'm in a reunion when I'm on Zoom anymore. I just want to hug you. So I will.
One of the gifts that you bring to us, Tom, is just taking one line of scripture and explicating and unfolding it and unwrapping it for us. Even for myself, you know, who tries to do that on a regular basis. I have to remind myself to look at each sentence as each phrase is carrying a weight of meaning that sometimes in the hearing, we just kind of let it go in one ear and out the other. And you make it stop in between the two ears and inside us and plummet that image of the shepherd for its meaning. It reminds me how the genius of the gospel writers, sheer genius and artistry.
Sometimes people ask me if the gospel writers knew what they were doing. And I'm saying, well, I think so. I would, I would think so. I would think that the imagery strikes them very deeply. John, thank you for your encouragement with that because I, I sometimes think I'm making this stuff up as I go along and enforcing the imagery. think I'm making this stuff up as I go along and enforcing the imagery. And then, you know, the two notes that you sent me caused me to reflect a little bit and say, look at how deep this imagery of shepherd is. Just associate with it, out in the field there were shepherds. Well, so where Jesus is going to be his whole life is out in the field.
And as you said, it comes from decades and decades of hearing and meditating on. And then maybe one day just something clicks to bring things together. And of course, that's what the scriptures are, is generations of meditation on the Hebrew scriptures. And the image of the shepherd, that's been in the Hebrew scriptures forever. And the genius of the gospel writers to take those threads and weave them and pull them. It, you remind me always of how important understanding the Old Testament is in order to have an understanding of Jesus and of, and of the gospel.
It is interesting that the, the commentary on out in the field. And there is the temptation to, to read that, that these Bethlehem shepherds were aristocratic or were landowners. But the out in the field by night with no shelter, that's what that implies. It implied that they were out in the field with no shelter and no protection from the night, caring for the flock. And that Luke is being very, very forceful here that this is what it is to be a disciple of Jesus, to be like the shepherd Jesus, who is out in the field caring for the flock by night. And you're right, you can see this as a Christmas image because it's been commercialized. And I love those Christmas cards with the shepherds, I just love them. But when I see them, I see them differently than I think they're intended by the printer. They now evoke the gospel. What it is to be in the field.
And I'm deeply appreciative of your reference and bringing us back also to the words of Pope Francis. And just the classic line, you are to smell like the sheep. You're to be out there in the margins where they are because that's most likely where we'll find Christ.
And of course, there's that great quote from Francis, that the church is the field hospital. That the very, very, we're, we're quick to move in the direction of the need. That's what it is to be a sacramental people. We're quick to move in the direction of the need. And the way I would, we're quick to be the angel, we're quick to be the shepherd, we're quick to be the Christ.
I want to let everybody know that the notes that you prepared for this evening will be on our parish website. We record our town halls for those who wanted to be here but couldn't. And for those of us who were here but want to listen again and take more time with it. And certainly your presentation is one I think that many of us would like to reflect on more deeply and we'll have the notes there as well, I'll send them on to Kristoff and he'll attach them to the link on our, on the website. So thank you very, very much again, Tom, and we wish you a happy new year. And thanks for, for the insight that, yes, we want to say good riddance to 2020, but we don't want to lose the reality of the grace of God that was present in what we sometimes think was all darkness.